Okay, everyone should receive the copy of the minutes from November thirteenth. And I would, any additions, corrections?
I move to approve the November thirteenth, twenty eighteen minutes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion, comments?
I had a question on, um, Ms. Raiders' comments, um, concerning the bond modification. There's a line in there, um, that I didn't recall correctly that says, um, that this, this would be a reissuance. And I, I understood it to be a modification, um.
I think she explained it, um, in technical terms, they consider it a reissuance.
Terry, can you just double check the, uh, the recording and make that correction if necessary?
Cause, cause if it is in fact a reissuance, I, um, that, that just seems different than what we had discussed as, as far as a modification of, of the existing bonds. But it might be a, a technicality, I'm not.
It was either something she stated, but, um, it, the technical, um, what the rules say, they call it a reissuance, but it's basically a, a modification. She talks about it being a, a modification going through the document.
Yeah, it says the next paragraph that the modification agreement will also change the projected completion. Borrowed O-line bank will enter into a modification agreement which will, which will provide for the change in amortization.
I re- I remember that part, I just, the, the reissuance word stuck out to me that, um, Ms. Raider said, maybe I missed that when, when she was, um, describing what, what exactly we were approving, but... Cause I think that the motion did pass unanimously, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, um, he, in the first, um, on the third paragraph, it's a really long paragraph, it says, "We're not actually extending the maturity date of either bond, but because we are deferring and, deferring and then re-amortizing, amortizing the principal payments on the, the Series twenty seventeen bonds, that for federal tax code purposes, results in modifications and an extension of what's known as the weighted average m- maturity." So it's just, um...
Mine says reissuance, it says for federal tax code purposes as a reissuance of those bonds.
Right, they, it's kind of interchangeable.
Is it?
It says the pr- the proposed extension results in what is known as for federal tax code purposes as a reissuance of the bonds.
But it actually is a modification.
Well, those seem like two, two different things. But maybe, maybe I'm not understanding, I might not understand the, the full process that they have to do.
I think it's just a technical term that, that the actual federal tax code refers to it as it, we have to handle it as a reissuance. That's why we had to have the public hearings and advert- advertise it and everything. But it's technically a modification to the, the, um, original bonds. It's just a chain, a modification to the amortization schedule.
Okay, I'll review my notes on it and, and the documentation we have. I just, I didn't remember the reissuance word coming up at all in, in the discussion we had with, with bond counsel.
But Terry will double check that and make sure we do have it correct. And if it is reissuance, it will remain this way. Any other additions, corrections?
Um, I'd like to, uh, clarify on the, the contract for the unit that we, uh, or, or the, the one unit that we put up for sale. I didn't state that I was going to abstain, but I did abstain from that. So I'd like the record to state that I abstained from voting on that. It do- it shouldn't, I mean, it doesn't change anything, it still would have passed by majority.
Yeah. Okay. Can I add that?
Well.
Anything else? Anything else?
No.
Having the motion and a second and the two, possible two corrections, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As she carries. Okay, next on the agenda, we've got, uh, the best dress business for twenty eighteen for Christmas on the square. Alan, would you like to come up and join me?
How's it going, Jenny?
Certainly. I didn't see her sitting back, I'm sorry.
Jenny's my right hand and she never says, "You want to do what?" She just says, "Let's do it."
Good.
No?
Again, congratulations for the best dress window, twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, here, somebody's got a phone in here, I'm sure we can use. Get over here so we can get the council, take it from there, get the councilman to do it.
Ready?
Yep. One, two, three.
Thank you again, thank you for everything, everything that you do for the town.
Yeah, good job, it was, it was beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rebecca, treasurer's report, please.
Okay, just a few comments regarding the November financial information in your packet. During the month, I did transfer an exact amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, nine, three hundred seventy-five, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, from the sewer impact fee account to the general and L D I P account. This represents the FY eighteen town share of debt service on the E and R project. And so every year, as part of the budget, we have this number that is intended to come from impact fees that we collect, that pays for the debt service on that E and R bond. So it will recur every year.
What was that total again that you had to transfer?
Three seventy-five, nine fifteen. So, there is a remaining transfer that needs to happen. The final accounting for that E and R project is not complete. The M E B final payoff is still in one bow until that is all signed off by the engineer and everything is complete, and I submit that for reimbursement to M D E, then I will do the final project accounting. There will be cost share between us and Metcom, we'll have the final grant payment, and then the remainder of the capital costs that the town is going to pay in cash will then also be transferred out of the sewer impact fee account.
And just for everyone's edification, what, approximately what was the total for the upgrade?
It was a almost twenty-two million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
So, on your income statement report, we are forty-two percent through the budget year. I can report that the first quarterly income tax receipt occurred at the end of November. So if you look there, the percentage that we've collected of the total budgeted amount is about twenty-six percent. That would make you think, because it's a quarterly payment, that we should reach the budget. But that first quarterly payment included a reconciling item from a previous tax year that will not recur. So if I just look at what would be considered the first true quarterly tax year payment, I'm still concerned about whether we'll reach that six hundred thousand dollar budgeted income tax.
Okay.
And I'll just keep you up to date on that as it, as those quarterly payments are received. And I am happy to say that I sent the late notices for property tax payments for the prior tax year, there were only seven accounts that had not paid taxes from the prior year.
Good.
So that's one of the lowest I've ever had.
Great, thank you.
And that's it.
Any comments, questions for Rebecca?
Um, on page two, I noticed we were running a little high already this year for, um, property liability insurance and for, uh, capital outlay under general government.
I can address those individually. So for that insurance line item in December, so at our next January meeting, you'll have, what will then include, the allocation of the annual insurance expense to other departments. So for now, what's been coded to this account is everything that we've paid, but it has not been allocated to other departments. So in December, you'll see a significant change to that number and it will come down.
Okay, so the actual number will actually decrease once it's spread over to the other?
The act- yes, exactly.
Yeah, cause she, she makes a initial and puts it in the general fund and then disperses it to the other departments.
Right. Because we pay liability and property insurance at different times, I usually wait until December after I know what those final numbers are to make the allocation.
And the capital outlay?
And then capital outlay is just a function of all the remainder of expenses that are happening up here, um, for the renovations. So the furniture and the carpet and the painting, and that was a line item budgeted in FY eighteen, it just wasn't completed for them. So likely I'll have to just do a budget amendment for paperwork purposes to bring that money forward.
Thank you, and, um, on page six, um, there's two, uh, the interest income and other income. I guess that's, that's a good thing, but they seem to be also running significantly higher than budgeted.
And ultimately, that interest income amount includes income on impact fees, which ultimately for financial statement purposes gets taken out because its uses restricted. So it looks inordinately high during the course of the year, but by the end of the year, there is an adjustment that's made.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Rebecca? Thank you very much. Okay, um, Jada, planning department, please.
Jada's on the night.
Oh, she's not here, okay.
And we did not have a meeting last month and we do not have anything on the agenda for this month.
Okay, very good. And, uh, move to our police report. Corporal Nelson's with us, but she also has a guest, Sergeant Sean Moses. Thank you both, both for coming. Anything you want to add to your report?
Welcome Sergeant Moses.
Uh, if I may, there, uh-
Certainly.
Good evening, uh, councilwoman, uh, Sean Moses on sergeant in the sheriff's office. I work with Christie, Christie has been reassigned as a school resource officer to, uh, fill an immediate role in two of our middle schools to teach the dare program, uh, due to some realignment in the sheriff's office at First Middle. So I'll be filling in for her, uh, I have to split my time between Lexington Park, uh, where I supervise the community policing unit there, and then up here in Leonard Town. So the goal is in the interim to make sure that there's minimal disruption in service that's provided by the sheriff's office to Leonard Town. Uh, so after the meeting, I will bail myself to you guys to try to talk out anything if you have long-term, if there are any concerns or questions. Uh, I'll be working for Lachelle and LaChelle, um, for the immediate future, uh, till we can either-
Like, if we're using this line, anything?
Yes. So we're going to still rate March anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll be around to, to talk to you guys afterwards.
Okay. And, of course, want to sh- thank the sheriff's department for all the help they give us for especially our events, so thank you all very much and certainly much appreciated. I think the, um, Christmas on the Square went, uh, very well this year with, uh, as far as I've heard, there were no issues. Did you all have any issues, so?
No issues at all.
Great, great.
That's good.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add, Christie?
Um, we did, the town hall and so we did adopt a family, um, from Duke this year. We've gotten a lot of presents, they will all be, uh, whether the cash donations were used and LaChelle went shopping to buy for, uh, a young lady. And then whatever's left, I will get, I will get them all wrapped, we'll take all the pictures and, um, and I'll deliver them before, the weekend before Christmas, so that twenty-second, twenty-third, um, she, they live right here in Leonard Town, um, just past the school. And, uh, as of last year, I mean, they were thrilled, so.
Good, now thank you for, for-
You're welcome.
That's a lot.
Jumping on that, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, LaChelle, let's move on to your reports.
Yeah, we do have a public hearing.
Yeah, do have a public hearing for fifteen, so we could, uh, you ready to do that?
Yeah.
You want to give an introduction first, or?
You can go ahead and close in, then I'll give the introduction.
Okay, go ahead and entertain a motion to close the regular meeting and open the, uh, public hearing for ordinance number one eighty-eight, critical area map amendment. So we need a motion to close the regular meeting and-
I'll motion to close the regular meeting.
And, and open public hearing.
And open a public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Jay? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, okay.
So staff has been working with the state critical areas staff for over a year now on the required updating of our critical area mapping for Leonard Town. Um, the county is moving forward with theirs as well, um, but they have a lot larger area to cover. They're about in the same pro- point in the process that we are. Um, House Bill twelve fifty-three, which was passed in two thousand and eight, required the state to update the maps. We are holding a public hearing today regarding this. The hearing was advertised in the County Times and on the town website. At the November twel- twelfth meeting, we introduced ordinance number one eighty-eight, which is adopting the new maps and, um, so we can take action later in the meeting on, today, uh, on that ordinance. Uh, we did have a meeting on December fifth, twenty seventeen, so a year ago, where critical area staff came down and gave a presentation to any property owners that were affected by the remapping. And I'll go over those areas in just a second. Um, and so we had a presentation downstairs and then they met one-on-one with anyone that had any question regarding how this affected their properties. Um, so as of today, I have not received any other comments, um, regarding the changes. Um, most of the changes are, are out on Route five near the winery. Um, I gave you all a copy of the map at your table, I'm gonna turn this one so that people can see in the audience. So, um, the previous map, everything downtown, this includes Reichen. There's some properties shown on the map that are outside of the town, um, so we don't, this is only for the parts that are in town. So nothing really changed from Reichen through Tudor Hall, um, all the way out till you get to Route five. And then, um, the winery was, did not used to be in the critical area and the properties of the Antique Center, the ones that are in red there, the part of Leonard Town Center and across Route five where the C V S is and, um, the Edwards Farm. So all of those are the ones that are really have changed in this update. And what they did is the Critical Area Commission, they, they had, um, hired consultant, they went out, they looked for new wetlands and new, uh, water, um, based on, uh, any changes that had been made, and then it's a thousand feet from that line. Um, so that, there are, um, wetlands up on the area of the frontage of Edwards Farm, so that would have brought in, um, the rest of that area. Um, so that's really the only place that were any changes. Um, I think it was fifty-some properties that were, um, notified and that included, um, actually Foxwell, that was thirty-nine down there. Um, they all attended the meetings, cause there was a little, um, little area on Foxwell that it wanted just a little bit higher. Um, so all of those property owners were notified as well as part of those fifty-five. Um, but we'd have, everybody, we had a really good turnout back in twenty seventeen and everybody, uh, went through the presentation and were, was able to meet with staff and answer their questions.
And this is required by the state of Maryland for these updates?
A House Bill twelve fifty-three that was passed in two thousand and eight required that it get, uh, they remapped the entire state.
Did we get any inquiries, uh, or comments from the public?
No.
Written, written, okay. Is there anyone in the, uh, audience today that would like, uh, make a comment on the critical areas updates? Okay. Hearing none, I guess we can, uh, go ahead and close the, um, public hearing and open the regular meeting back up. So we'll need a motion and a second for that.
I'll move to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
So that brings us to, um, the next item, which is ordinance number one eighty-eight, which is the critical area map amended, amendment. So this is the ordinance that we, um, introduced last month, uh, and now we've held the public hearing. Um, the draft map that, that I just showed you, uh, gets attached to the ordinance and that will become our new bounders if we adopt this today for the critical areas.
Um, I noticed a, a, a change or discrepancy between the, um, the maps that were distributed before that have the full, uh, I guess that have the county areas on there. Um, they took out, there, there's no overlay for the Gregory Drive, Foxwell, Camp Calvary area that is, I guess, not within the town?
Correct, that's not town.
Right, that would be the county's ordinance, not ours.
Okay. And so this, this is still, uh, listed as, uh, proposed draft map, do we?
Um, it does show critical areas.
Do we think there's any other? See, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, this one.
So, um, here's the plan.
This one shows that area.
Yeah, this is the map we're adopting.
But this one is the one that was distributed to us for today and it doesn't show that.
Well, I think it's just the black and white, it didn't copy, I think that's like a yellow copy today, but this is the same map.
Yeah, you can't see the color.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't copy very good.
Okay, cause this one looks like they took out all of the county area over here and the county area here.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right, 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 right. Um, so, I asked, I asked them to do that, yes.
I just, I just wanted to make sure. I just want to make sure I have the correct map that we're actually approving today.
You are correct, you are correct, yes. The, this one is, they did remove all, everything up within is the same on this map, but I did ask them to just take off the county, so you're correct. That's the one that gets attached to the ordinance itself. It only shows our, gotcha.
Our, our, pretty bad.
But it's the same as on your map. I can show you on the ordinance, the original. So here's one that's attached to the ordinance, I just asked them to make me one that doesn't show any of the, um, outside areas.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
So that we had it, something that wasn't confusing, um, attached to the ordinance.
Thank you.
And LaChelle, you said this is state mandated and I think you've answered this and I just can't recall, but how often do we have to update this? Is, do we have to do this again?
Um, this, this update was passed in, what did I say, two thousand and eight and it hadn't been done for over twenty, thirty years, I think, the original mapping that was done in the eighties.
Okay. So is there a timeframe, will we have to do this again?
No, um, it'll be up to the legislators to decide when it gets done again and then they, um, enforce that.
Okay. Okay.
The C- Critical Area Commission moved forward with it, so they've been working on it since two thousand and eight and we're just now getting the updated mapping. And then we, we have a limited time to actually adopt the mapping.
Okay, thank you.
And we, and in the original map, whenever I met with them at first, they actually had the portion at, um, the Maryland Antique Center that is in red now, that was all yellow, um, and I argued that that was already developed. The red is for I D A intensely developed and it's already, you know, completely paved and, and developed. So they did finally agree to change that to, to I D A instead of L D A. So we, we have gone through parcel by parcel and made some changes that were not correct, um, before we met with all the property owners.
Will this restrict any of our uses at the Port of Leonard Town?
No, because it's already a flood plain, so we're, we're more restricted than critical areas there.
For future? Gotcha, okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
I mean, not that we can do anything.
Not that we have a choice anyway, I know.
Did, uh, i- through those meetings, did, were, were there any, um, I guess any discussions that, um, that went unresolved or, or anybody?
No, everybody left that evening, um, satisfied that their questions had been answered. Um, they were able to meet one-on-one, they had a number of representatives here, so they could watch the presentation and then, uh, meet one-on-one just about their specific property. And it was mostly questions about how it does affect, it's not really that you have a choice in the matter, uh, but it's how, understanding how the, that will affect you in the future. So it was mostly about the difference between L D A, I D A, and R C A, most of the questions.
Can we follow a similar process in the future for any, um, uh, if there were to be any annexations, would we just kind of follow the same review process that we went through with this?
No, there's specific, um, what you have to do for annexation is spelled out in the state code as well, so you have to do the same, uh, processes that's required for annexations, not for this.
I, I meant for, if there were, um, if we, uh, if there were any annexations in the future that were critical areas, would we go through the same process that this is, that, that we went through this?
That property is going through this same process now with him.
Yeah, in the county, so it would just transfer to us with the same designation that it's already approved in the county.
Which, which property?
I, I, if there was a property in critical areas.
That, that's what I'm saying, is, is if there were to be an annexation and there were, there were critical areas.
It would just transfer to the town at whatever designation it already had out in the county.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to take it through?
Right, we wouldn't have to do anything, it would automatic, for instance, Reichen, when it annexed into town, it came in with critical areas already, uh, on, as it overlay, and so we just brought it into town as the same designation as it has today.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anyone care to make a motion?
Uh, I move to approve ordinance number one eighty-eight, critical area map amendment.
I second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is also an ordinance that we introduced last month, uh, and so it is available to, um, take action on today was ordinance number one eighty-seven, the sale of surplus property. Uh, resolution six dash sixteen was passed November fourteenth, twenty sixteen, declaring condo unit number three hundred located at four one six six oh, Port House Drive to be surplus property and to proceed with selling the property. Eventually, the property was listed for sale with Brickhouse Realty in amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, but after the property didn't move for s- uh, we listed it with him after it didn't move, uh, for sale by owner. No offers had been received to date, uh, until our offer that we had last month and we approved the sale, um, sales agreement. Uh, we have vacated the prop- the building twenty-seven months ago and purchased this new town hall. Council approved the sale of, at the, uh, November twelfth, eighteen, um, meeting and introduced this ordinance. The agreement of sale states that we would go to closing prior to December thirty-first with a sale price of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand to Robert and Lily and Mattingly. So we have the, um, can move forward with finalizing that sale with this ordinance today.
And, and let me just clarify, we had taken the, uh, listing away from Brickhouse Realty before, you know, they, uh, you know, were interested.
Right. Any questions?
No, I'll just echo what I said, um, in our last meeting, I think it's great we got an offer, cause it's been sitting for so long and if we didn't accept it and just continue to let it sit, you know, then we don't want to rent it, so now's the time.
Any other comments, questions? Any other comments, questions?
I think we beat the fuck out of it.
Yeah.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number one eighty seven, sale of real property, finalizing the sale of the condo unit number three hundred at four one six six zero Courthouse Drive.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion?
I think I'm gonna abstain on this.
Okay, um, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention? Okay. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Okay. The next item is, um, an alley easement for utility installation. Um, a couple of months ago, I brought to you the request, um, from Seymour, Seymour Town Properties LLC that owns the Seymour Town Building to place a grease trap and a, um, propane tank in the alley that we own directly behind the building. They don't have any other land in which to put it and they do have a restaurant, um, that they would like to put in the building. So we had, um, discussed it, there were some questions and, um, I had made sure that everything was addressed, we talked about it again at our last workshop. Um, and so, uh, on Thursday, I had sent you, um, the easement that our attorney, um, Patrick Murphy had, um, drawn up for us and, um, so that's on the table, um, today. It would be, uh, granting, um, for an area, like I said, directly behind in the alley that we own. Uh, once the grease trap and the, uh, tank were placed in the alley, it's up to the, the, um, the grant, grantees to, um, they, they actually need to concrete over it, they can't just pave it, um, so actually it will make the alley more, um, more secure than it is today. It actually, we had that in our, uh, CACO budget to, um, reasphalt this year anyway, that was one of the, it's in pretty bad shape, so, um, once they would do this work, then they would actually concrete over the, the fifty foot section that they would be tearing up.
Now, I know there was some question as to whether, why there was a third entity involved in this, the Washington and Park LLC. Can you, um, read Patrick's, uh, response to that?
Yes, so. So I had, um, Patrick Thomas, I said the wrong name earlier, Patrick Thomas. Um, so, um, I just had him, um, state, um, if, if he was comfortable with that. And he said that he doesn't have any issue with granting the easement to both entities. In fact, I think it's better for the town because having both entities indemnifies and holds the town harmless and gives the town more protection.
Okay, any other concerns there?
My only question, I'm pretty sure I know the answer and I just wanna make sure. The easement goes with the property, so it's, it's attached to that property and the property owner of the grantee.
Yes.
So that if the, the restaurant went away and all those LLCs, for whatever reason, went away, it still runs with those properties.
With the property itself, yes.
Right, that's, that's all I.
That's why it gets recorded at the White House.
Exactly, right.
Courthouse.
But it's, it is on the property.
Yeah, we don't go that high.
Yeah, but, and the LLC that's leasing is free to leave and they won't have anything that's gonna be following them at any point, right?
Correct. Um, so the, um, Seymour Town Properties LLC actually owns the building, correct, yeah, okay. And the other is the investors for the restaurant.
So again, from what the easement says, the property owners are held responsible for installation, repair, putting back together, maintenance, okay.
Yes, maintenance.
See, we, do we have some members with us, uh, any comments, um, what, what, what do you actually need to do in the alleyway? Can you give us? Can you tell us how that's protected by, you know, being underground and?
Pretty six inches of concrete.
Six inches of concrete over top, so trucks?
Off, off the grease trap.
Right, so trucks going over, since this is a, uh, alleyway, it won't be any issues with trucks or heavy?
It'll, it'll be better with.
Yep, okay.
How, how big is a grease trap?
Is it down here?
Ten by four. And I don't know because of the lot stuff in that alley that we don't know where it is, that's why I need the whole spot, I need to dig it up and then the side work.
So you're gonna, oh, you're gonna dig up the hole?
Well, it depends what.
In that area that was on the east.
Right.
There's a lot of old water lines that, 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 that.
Okay. You're not gonna cut anything, right?
Yeah, definitely.
That's right, the right answer.
And I would point out that when we bought, purchased this building in the parking area in the back, um, this building was attached to the PNC building and so when, part of the, uh, deal when we bought the building from Rainbow Construction was that we gave them the, the same type of easement for a grease trap in the back in the parking area of this building, uh, if they get a restaurant into, in the PNC building.
Oh, so they haven't done it yet?
No.
Okay, I see.
But, but they have the easement, it's recorded in the deed.
Okay, so they can do it whenever, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Si- similar easement plus similar property, we own this property and we own that alleyway property also.
No, I think it's good, I mean, to help small businesses, we want restaurants and things in here, so.
What kind of timeframe, uh, are you looking at?
Three months, six, three months.
And then this is kind of the first part of that to, to get this, the, find out what's under the ground there and get the, the grease trap in the?
No, I'm gonna, once I have the easement, we'll go ahead and get the, pick the address. I mean, I'm gonna get it in there somehow.
Yeah. So this is the first part, you, you need this to get the investors committed.
Yeah, yeah, we're supposed to move ahead.
Yeah, right, okay.
So I have a quick question, LaShaw, you mentioned that our attorney, our, our town attorney drafted this, are, are, is the town paying for that to be drafted?
Um, we did.
Shouldn't that be on the, the granttee, the, yeah, shouldn't that be on the grantee to, to pay that cost versus the town?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't have an agreement ahead of time that, um, I mean, it wasn't a requirement, but I mean, if, if it's something that the council wants to pass through that cost.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I would be more comfortable, only because we're, it's for an individual, an individual property owner and that's, you know, not really.
We did that too with Riken, they, for the bonds last month, they paid at the attorney fees, anything associated with us, so that's something that, that council can certainly make it part of it.
Yeah, I mean, that seems fair to me, I think.
With the previous agreement, um, with this building, when, when we went to settlement, um, was it a, uh, a promise of a future easement or was it?
No, it's recorded in, in the deed.
But, but the easement itself wasn't, wasn't recorded?
Yes, it's part of the deed, yes, it's spelled out in the deed itself. I pulled it right before the meeting and we looked at it.
Um, I, I guess what I'm asking is this easement agreement, um, I, I would feel more comfortable meeting with the attorney, um, in a workshop to discuss some of my questions with it. But w- would it be, um, depending upon what you find there, um, I, I, I think for liability purposes, I would feel more comfortable having a survey of what is actually, um, put in the ground or, or where exactly they?
Well, they all do an ASB, I want something that's.
Yeah, and that's part of the deed, it says it's, I'm pretty sure it says, it might not say it actually.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I didn't, um, I didn't see that in here, but just, just a, uh, you know, in, involving a surveyor at some point, I mean, we, we did involve a surveyor, it looks like, for the site planner, you did, for the proposed, um, agreement, uh.
Uh, we can make an, another item that says that, uh, you would provide an ASB once it's constructed. I know you'd said you were going to.
I have to, yeah, I have to do it, but I brought the water line and to, to build it, so.
Right. So we can add language to say that, that an ASB would be provided once it's constructed in the ground.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Mike, I d- I don't mean to speak too freely, but I know you have interest in the property next door, is there any way that the, the necessary improvements could be, um?
It's, it's not owned by, it's owned by a different contractor.
As opposed to putting them in the drive aisle?
Right, yeah, because of the, we have different, I'm, I'm a common owner of this building, but I, it's different property.
I just didn't know if that would be something that you could seek an easement with them as opposed to with the, the drive aisle with the town.
I don't wanna restrict, I mean, I might want to do, add to the building.
Uh, uh, the other question I had is I don't know if we really wanna set a precedent for putting tanks in the ground under, under drive aisles and, and under, mm, alleys and, and roadways. I know, I know we do with water lines and sewer lines already, but as far as the propane tank was concerned.
With the, it's, uh, in Clark's Rest, uh, the, um, it's in the roads, it's, it's the, all the town homes in Clark's Rest have, um, propane tanks underground, we've already done that with them. And some residents actually have it underground.
M- my insurance office had a tank underground, yeah.
Th- th- those are, those are private properties as opposed to a public right of way or a public property.
But some of the ones in Clark's Rest, it, it goes into the alleys and, I mean, it's, it's not all on private property in Clark's Rest.
The tanks are in the alleyways?
Some of them.
Is this tank gonna be owned by the property or is it like rented through whoever?
No, it'll be owned by somebody, yeah.
Gotcha. And it'll be totally buried, like, it'll be buried underneath, so if, if they have to maintain it, then they have to rip up the concrete?
It's kind of, it's really.
But, uh, would that be Taylor Gas's responsibility or would that be the building's?
Yeah, I don't know, it's a, I don't know, it's a building.
Responsibility, if, if Taylor Gas needs to access their tank for whatever reason, okay.
But she would have changed the whole alley.
I don't know anything about what you're doing, so that's why I'm asking. Maybe you need a big bulldozer, I don't know. And the only other question I would have is how many other buildings have, um, have these easements, have grease traps behind them?
I don't know, I don't know, do you know, that we're, you mean where the towns give an easements?
It's just any, anybody, I mean, do all the rest, uh, do all the buildings?
A lot of the ones downtown have not, not had them, um, any new, uh, restaurant is required that they have grease traps.
Okay.
Um, we do have some, uh, in existing buildings, we will look at, we do have the authority to waive it in certain instances, if they're not really cooking, if they're doing, um, just very.
If it's limited cooking, they, sometimes they can get away with not having a grease trap.
Right.
The department doesn't like it, but, but we, we have, we do have the authority to do that, but in, in a full blown restaurant, that's not gonna be the case. But in some of the old buildings, um, they're grandfathered and they don't have, uh, grease traps. But anything, uh, in recent years, they're required to have.
But we, we really do need them, cause that, if not, that grease goes into our sewer system.
Well, is that something that we're gonna end up seeing now over the next couple of years, is that we're gonna be putting more of these grease traps in, is more, it's more restaurants?
For new construction is, is definitely required.
Definitely, but even with the older?
Yeah, but some of the old ones, most of those, they can be, you know, grandfathered in, yeah.
Cause we are setting a precedent too, if we do this for this building, then we should be doing it for others. I don't have a problem with it, I just wanna be clear that.
Well, I, I mean, in this case, they don't have any other land, but in a lot of cases, for instance, the Duke Building doesn't have a grease trap.
Mm-hmm.
But they ha- actually own the alley behind, that portion of the alley is owned by the Duke Building, so they would have land to be able to do this.
Okay. Okay.
Um, PNC didn't have any other land as well, they, just the footprint of the building, that's why we gave them the, the easement behind our building.
Yeah, I think.
Really, really, in just the downtown area in town, there is the building, um, line restriction, so you build right up to the, the building line.
Okay.
But, you know, outside of the downtown area, yeah, any, any new construction would be required.
But it's still maybe something that we're gonna end up be, doing for, uh, you know, say, the social speakeasy or something, maybe?
Well, they have area behind.
They do have land.
Yeah, they, they own, yeah, that one does.
I can't think of any other, right off, that's not to say there's not, um.
Right. I just didn't know if that was gonna be something like every meeting, we're gonna be here doing a grease trap for the, you know, for every building down the, down the line, okay.
Yeah, it could be a bad pro- a good problem.
Yeah.
I only have one more question, um, I agree with what, I see what Christie's saying about having them, you know, pay for the lawyer fee for the, the draft, but, I mean, have we done that with everyone? I mean, I just make sure we're being fair, like, what about?
We really haven't done that, it was part of the closing with the PNC one because, um, um, it was part of the deed that was being drawn up.
Okay. Okay.
We split those closing costs and we had an agreement on how those closing costs were paid, so this is kind of some, Riken paid for all the closing costs for their bonds.
Okay.
So if it's something benefiting, um, another entity, not the town, then that's certainly something that we've done in the past.
Okay, I understand, all right, thank you.
How much money are we saving?
Would, would there be, I, I was gonna say, can't be talking that much money just for putting together this easement.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I, I think we had one very brief phone conversation and did, did it by email, it's not like we had a lot of meetings and there wasn't drafts back and forth, I mean, it was pretty straightforward. So it, it, it shouldn't be a huge, huge bill, a few hundred dollars.
Right.
And, and what are we, we saving by not doing the reasphalt that we were budgeted to do anyway?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know what that dollar amount would be, but it's.
I don't know what else to talk about.
It's very, fairly minimal, yeah.
Quid, quid pro quo here.
Right.
I mean, we're still gonna, it's, he's not gonna be concreting the whole alley, so there's still gonna be eventually some repairs on the other part of the alley that would need to be done.
Okay.
But for this section, he's probably, um, concreting it.
And you wouldn't be concreting the whole thing, it's just the limited area, once you figure out where it's gonna go.
But we're still talking ten foot by four foot, plus?
Yeah.
I would say the whole alley, just probably to start the quarter and just do the whole thing.
So.
The whole.
Depending where the grease trap ends up.
The whole width of the alley, not the, not the width and the length.
The whole width. Not the length, but wherever the, 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 the tank's gonna go, like, towards the hotel, and if grease trap, there's a sewer line somewhere in there, probably gotta find, you can get the top of it. Where that ends up, it'll just all concrete to that point. It would be somewhere behind my building, you know, the building there.
So then the rest beyond that, to the, to the intersection is, would be still the town's responsibility eventually to, to, uh, pay.
Seems like once we're doing it, maybe we just wanna do it all at once, it's a whole lot easier.
Yeah, it's already budgeted for this year, so, I mean, uh, we, we certainly don't wanna do it ahead of Mike doing this, so.
Right.
Yeah.
It might be easier when you have one cement truck out, just let it slide.
Well, he's doing cement, we're gonna be doing asphalt.
Ah, okay.
Any other questions?
I feel comfortable.
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, mention Mahan Reichel in their presentation last week, talking about how we need more restaurants like this downtown, so.
Absolutely.
I think, uh, you know, I think it's win-win for everyone, so.
I'm looking forward to it, I know every time I see Susan, I'm always asking her what's going in the building, so, thank you all, appreciate it, you and Mike, and everyone involved now.
Anyone care to make a motion?
All right, I move to approve assigning the easement with Seymour Town Properties LLC and Washington and Park LLC for installation of a grease trap and propane tank behind the Seymour Town Building off of Park Avenue.
And you're gonna add the, uh, ASB and cost of attorney fees?
That's right, yep, and ASB and cost of attorney fees.
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Opposed, is, is that nay, yeah, okay. Three, three to one, uh, and, um, so motion carries. Thank you very much.
Um, that was pretty much everything on the agenda, a couple of things, I found out today that we did, um, get our renewal of our Sustainable Community Designation. We had submitted that in August and I hadn't heard anything, so I reached out to the state and, um, every five years, we have to get that designation renewed. And, um, that's the only way we can get the grants from the state, uh, you have to be a sustainable community, so that's something that was really important. So, um, I did get notification today that we did get the renewal, um.
Just on, on speaking of that, how about the sidewalk project, phase two, cause if we didn't have that Sustainable Communities, uh, grant, we would have to pay for half of that, so.
So it, that.
We didn't have to pay for any of the phase one.
That designation is probably one of the most important designations that we have, so we got it, um, it, it was expiring in August, we had to resubmit by then, but, um, I just hadn't heard anything. I didn't really think there would be a problem, but, um, I just hadn't heard, so that was good news. Um, I also heard about five minutes before I came up here that we got the Army Corps of Engineers permit, so we have all, all our permits for the slips up here. So right after the first of the year, I'll be moving that, that project forward, I talked to the engineer. So right after the first of the year, I'll be moving that that project forward, I talked to the engineer today and um they um are back on the drawings and getting those finalized, uh and working on the bid packets, so um hopefully we can get that out to bid pretty quickly. Um, and then Dan mentioned the Mahan Reichel presentation, um, it was a really great turnout, we had it Thursday night and Friday morning. Um, every seat was taken on both both meetings, very positive uh feedback, um, if for those who missed it, I do have the presentation on the website. But um it really doesn't um really give you the full impact, I don't know if it's something that we would want to try to have them walk through maybe by phone at a workshop or something, I just think it really is critical for all the council to really see it, I think the ones that did see it um, there's a lot, a lot of recommendations, some really doable things, we're gonna be needing to really look at that um as we go through the budget process, but um, I'll talk to them and see what it would take for them to come and do the final presentation, because that was just the draft recommendations.
Right.
Um, but I really would like everybody to see it, because it was really impactful.
And uh I I wish we had videoed their presentation, so everyone could have seen it, yeah.
Yeah, I thought of that, yeah, after that.
But if we do get them back for a final, we definitely wanna make sure.
Yeah, and the PowerPoint is good, but it doesn't really have, I mean, they had a lot of additional things that they talked about.
Let me just about the um, the um household income, comparing Leonardtown to Saint Mary's County in Maryland, you know, we're a lot higher than than both.
What, with like third richest in the state, wasn't it something like that?
It was something high like that, yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Median income, right, so, anything else you wanna add to the the, what you saw at the presentation, Mary?
Um, uh, you know, I I liked what they had to say, they they certainly didn't have, I mean, I was, I think I was kind of waiting for like, you know, the eureka moment, they were like, if you do this then then everything, and there there wasn't that, but like you said, there was definitely some attainable things, I loved um I love the idea of a town logo and rev- revamping that, you know, something that we can use more on a website and something that we can we can do more with. So I mean, and I I I like, I mean, I'm looking forward to doing more with that.
Yep.
And rebranding.
And the uh the waysi- way signage, which is, you know, trying to get people, telling people how far things are off the square
Mm-hmm.
in steps rather than miles, so, you know, that kinda thing.
And and where it says, you know, where it could say shopping as opposed to specifically, you know, a a business or something, you know, restaurants this way, shopping this way, something, you know, more.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to definitely prioritize, um, I think, we talked about it at both the meetings, that um the the rebranding would need to kind of be hand in hand with the wayfinding signage, I think, because we would wanna incorporate all that together, um, but I think the wayfinding signage is certainly something that we've been talking about for a really long time, and I know it's important to the businesses, and um so I think that's something that's very doable. Um, some of the restructuring of the square, there's um things that we can do for a minimal amount amounts of money and try new things, and so I I think there was just a lot that we can actually attain without.
One slide that I thought was uh very interesting was when he uh overlaid Walmart in their parking lot over Leonardtown
Mm-hmm.
and how, you know, people walk, you know, they don't have a problem walking from one corner of the parking lot at Walmart to the other corner of the building.
Right. The automotive section way in the back, right.
And uh it it, you know, that is certainly larger than downtown Leonardtown, so, you know, people that complain about walking, cause we don't have parking, there's they just don't wanna walk ten yards for parking, so, uh, just thought that was.
I thought a good point was made too, though, about the public restrooms and, you know, there are things, you know, you can't walk you you know, we do need to start thinking about other ways to make the walking experience more enjoyable for people, since we don't have, you know, a covered building of a Walmart, so
Yeah, 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 exactly.
you know, you still do have to take that into consideration, that even though they would be walking that far, they would be walking under a covered area.
Yeah, well, and even using trees as coverage, you know, for from sun and that kinda thing, so.
Yeah, yeah. It was really interesting, after, you know, seeing the presentation and going back and then looking at the square and seeing, you know, all the bushes and everything and going, oh yeah, that does make sense, you know, those are chopping it up and all the benches are out in the sun, so, I thought those were some great observations.
Yeah.
Jay, you were at one.
I was there, yeah, I know, I remember too, you talked, I think LaShel even mentioned too about moving the benches, kinda making them a little more friendly, like facing one another or?
Yeah, there there's one in particular that I'd already had a price from stepping stone, that it faces out to the street, it's in front of uh Home Elements and Crazy for You, it faces the street, but
Okay.
just making them face each other, so people could sit down on them, I mean, just really kinda common sense things, um, that we don't, you know, I'm not seeing this where every day, we don't really think about it.
Well, sometimes it's good to have an outsider's, you know, opinion that that hasn't seen it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's a great, great idea, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll be working on that, and uh that was pretty much my uh report, was talk about that.
Mm-hmm.
Also, did wanna say, uh, talk about Tyler, why he's not here tonight, uh, his son burned his hands last night on the fire screen or fire fireplace.
Glass.
Had to take him, glass fireplace, yeah, uh, fire screen, so they had to take him to Children's Hospital today, but everything's fine, they don't think there's gonna be any um um permanent marks or anything, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, my goodness.
And just wanted to uh wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and have a safe and happy holiday season, so. And since Tyler's not here for the events report, anything you wanna add, Brandy?
Um, well, the uh Fort Worth Annual Veterans Day Parade uh was held on Sunday, November eleventh, um, it was a very successful event. Um, our estimates that we, it was attended by over a thousand people of all ages. Um, the parade began at Fenwick Street, uh proceeded into historic downtown Leonardtown and ended at Port House Drive. Um, and featured veterans, um elected officials, um local marching bands and and more. Um, immediately following the parade, um, a memorial replay ceremony was held in the square. Uh, this year's ceremony commemorated the hundredth anniversary of the end of World War One and the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam Tet Offensive, um, we had guest speakers attend, uh the Gray Mills High School history teacher, Annabelle Delgado, uh commemorated World War One anniversary, and then uh Jay Ernest Bell, local um attorney, uh commemorated the uh Vietnam Tet Offensive. Uh, we also had Honorable Dignitary speak, um, Maryland Secretary of State, John C. Wobensmith, uh, the uh Gary D. Knight, Vice Chairman of uh Secretary of Maryland Veterans Home, uh local state delegate, Matthew Morgan, as well, uh President of Commissioners of Saint Mary's County, James R. Guy, and Captain Jason Hammond from the Naval uh Texan uh Naval Air Station. And we also have members of families, um, descendants of local fallen heroes from World War One in attendance, and the late wreaths during the replay ceremony. Um, thank you to Mayor Burris for emceeing the parade and also for your moving speech during the uh the ceremony. Uh, right after the parade, we had members from the Harry Lundberg School Seamenship, uh, we had twelve members help um do the decorating for the town in preparation for uh Christmas on the square, uh, they removed the Veterans Day flags and put up the banners and the stars. Uh, thank you to Commissioner Jay Mattingly for pitching in that day, uh, and assisting with the decorating as well.
You're welcome, I let them go up the ladder.
Diddle.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Um, and then uh Christmas on the square, as you mentioned, uh Mayor Burris was a very successful event, um, our estimates that it was attended by now about nine thousand to ten thousand people that evening.
Wow.
Um, it was particularly cold that evening, so we're very happy with the turnout. Um, attendees, uh, most of the uh entertainment was provided free of cost, uh, and included um li- a live nativity scene, uh rides and face painting, uh food and much more. Um, highlights of the evening were the horse and carriage rides, uh provided by Southrop Post Farms, uh, and thank you uh to Mayor Burris for sponsoring that as well with his business, Old Town Insurance. Um, fire truck, um, the fire truck department did sleigh rides, train rides, um, and uh also there was another train ride provided by Saint Michael's School. Um, we included a new area, we moved the uh petting zoo to the carnival lot, um, so a lot more took place back there, we had the train rides back there. Um, and also Shepherd's Old Field was a new element this year, so we had a lot more traffic back um in the back end of town, so uh uh it was really a interesting event logistic wise.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then, of course, we had uh Saint uh Mrs. Claus's tent, um, we had creative characters providing face paintings, uh face tattoos and balloon art uh in the tent, and there was a special make and tape uh craft courtesy of Saint Marriage Col- uh Saint Mary's College um Community Art Students. Um, they donated their time uh to create the craft with seniors from Cedar Lane Senior Living Center. And uh that, the craft was designed by Wyman Design, uh Brian Jordan, and also um Karen Patterson CP Art Studio. Uh, and of course, Santa's Arrival at seven P M to for the annual tree lighting took place. Uh, once again, the uh volunteers from the Harry Lundberg School Seamenship pitched in at the event, all twelve volunteers returned that evening, um, they were great help. Uh, they even lifted one vehicle that ran into a ditch, so it was very helpful.
Wow.
Yeah.
And of course, um, thank you to the commissioners for attending and uh choosing the best dressed uh business uh for the evening, and congratulations to Crazy for You for winning that. Um, upcoming events, um, Zumba Fitness Around Town, that series continues, um, dates are provided um for December the eighth and the fifteenth. Uh, the eighth is the holiday party, um, and also um the January dates will be the fifth, the twelfth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth. And it takes place between eight thirty and nine thirty A M every Saturday. Um, and then the uh this fif- December fifteenth is the uh Santa and Mrs. Claus on the square, and that's the last major event um for the town for the season. Uh, thank you again to the Saint Mary's uh Sheriff's Department for pitching in and assisting in all the events.
Disney Month, thank you very much, so, um, okay, Community Development Planning, Aiden?
I don't have anything to report, lots of new permits.
That's cause I do see the list of new permits, so.
Quite a bunch of uh new construction, and we're in vehicles.
Yep. Yep, thank you. Christie, anything with utilities?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
Um, yes, I'm attending the Legislative Dinner on Wednesday, it's in Chesapeake Beach, if anyone changes their mind and interested, just in case, how we going? Um, that's really it, Christie, hope you can hurry back, welcome Sergeant Moses, glad to have you, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Okay, Mary, Business Development and Retention?
Yeah, I do have a couple things that I wanna talk about, uh, we had the Small Business Saturday, uh Shepherd's Old Field was extremely busy, I think both Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, um, but the town itself, the square did not fare so well from what I've heard from the small businesses, so I'm not sure what's going on, uh, it did start to rain, but not until about one o'clock in the afternoon, so it, the Small Business Saturday did not work out well for for downtown Leonardtown.
I think it was the weather really that, where Shepherd's Old Field, people go inside.
Yeah, we were down and it was, yeah.
Yeah, but it didn't, I mean, I was at horseback riding and it didn't start raining till one o'clock, so there there was still the morning.
It was over, it wa- uh we were out and it was, it was nice in the morning, but it was, I don't know, it just kinda looked doom and gloom, I don't know if that kept people in, but.
Yeah, some of the businesses, they're busy in the morning, but they just didn't, you know, it just died.
Once it, once it started, there wasn't anybody around town.
Yeah, I don't know, did we end up with any vendors in the tent?
Yeah, there were three.
Okay, and anybody hear how they did?
Actually, I'm sorry, two vendors and um, they did well in the morning, is what they said, and then there was music in the tent.
Okay. Um, there are three businesses uh up for sale right now in in Leonardtown, and I know one of them, if they don't sell, are gonna just completely close. So, you know, that's, that's, that's not optimistic, you know, I'm concerned about what's going on, that we have three businesses for sale, and then.
Well, one's health reasons with with Big Larry, one's, that's health reasons, so it's not like it's a business that's failing.
Mm-hmm. Right, but you know, if somebody doesn't buy it, then we don't have a business, you know, so, you know, there's there's some concerns there, and of course, um, the parking issue with Shepherd's Old Field, I think that's something that probably the council is gonna need to start addressing is, is how to handle some of the parking lot issues right now. Um, I drove by on Saturday and there was signs in the uh at the end of Fenwick Street that said Parking for Shepherd's Overflow, and I thought, well, that's great, because now it looks like nobody else can park here, so I don't know exactly, you know, what we're doing with the parking issue, so I have some concerns.
Well, with that issue, I mean, she needs to get her vendors out of her parking lot and move over to the the overflow. Now, I went by there Saturday and probably missed the cars that were in that parking lot for her vendors, so.
And, you know, is there gonna be a way, even if they do park over there, that people are gonna know, I guess the vendors probably will, but I don't wanna see people, you know, crossing through the the houses, the neighborhoods and the.
Well, Minitzki's own that property right next to it also, they're giving her permission to.
They gave her permission, and they can park in that grassy area, okay, that's one of the ways.
To actually have a little walkway, and that, and that's what the plan is, to have a little walkway, showing people how to get back there.
Yeah, I I I think that's, you know, we need to, we just need to be a little proactive and, you know, I went over and I looked at, um, that there's a crosswalk
Yeah.
there, but it's so faded, you can't hardly see it, so, you know, maybe something where we can address the crosswalks, make it a little clearer, you know, if I was brand new to Leonardtown and walking around and I saw, you know, a a crosswalk I couldn't even hardly see, would would I wanna go down that path, I mean, what what's really down there?
And actually, we're, we're trying to set up a meeting with Jimmy Minitz- Minitzki, he wanted to meet with me, or stop in my office and want to get together, so we're trying to set up a meeting um to to come up with an idea to, he wants, he said he's got an agreement from a number of years ago to put in a sidewalk, so I need to see what that is, we don't have any record on that, but.
Yeah, that would. That would be, you know, something that would be good, cause the more things that you have that are gonna guide people on where to walk, I mean, I've had my kids back there riding bikes and it, there's no, it's it's very, it's very unclear as to what you're actually doing back there, the traffic is is coming back and forth, you know, we don't wanna see anybody get hurt for sure. And uh, you know, wanna make sure that there's clear parking for for people that they, when they do come to Shepherd's or anywhere in town, that they feel comfortable knowing where to park. And, you know, driving up to a cone that says Shepherd's Only, you know, kinda goes, oh, okay, well, maybe I can't park here, so, but, you know, I don't think that's the truth.
And and again, that's, that was just temporary to try to alleviate a problem right here at Christmas, I mean, her, most of her problem, you know, it's, it's because of the Christmas crowd.
Right. I I think it is.
January, it's, we're not gonna see the problems that we were.
Until, but when is the Brew Garden open?
Yeah, that's what I was worried about.
Well, yeah, no, certainly.
And that's gonna be, you know, if we already have issues with the residents there across the street, you know, now we've got people coming in nine o'clock, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, even though she closes at eleven, you know, I'm old, I got kids, I go to bed at nine o'clock, so eleven o'clock would be, you know, it could be a potentially a problem to have the traffic going going through, and we just need to feel like, I feel like we need to be a little proactive and try to address it now instead of worrying about after the fact. So, that's all I have with the small businesses, but.
I think we're in trouble if you're old.
What?
So I think we're in trouble if you're old.
I'm old, let me tell ya.
Okay, does anyone from the public have any comment? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.